Commissioner.
That's great. Well, gracious having Father, we just thank you again for allowing us to come here and make the decisions that will be pleasing in your sight, Lord. We ask your blessings on this meeting, Lord, that we will act in an appropriate manner, Lord, to be again pleasing in your sight. And we just ask that you give us wisdom in this meeting. Thank you for our other two commissioners here today, Lord, and thank you for each and every individual here that's chosen to come tonight. You know, we just ask, Lord, that Fannin County will be in your favor. Thank you now for all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Gentlemen, before we start our unfinished business, I need to amend the agenda to remove number three under new business. I think so there were some timing discrepancies on this particular item, so I will make a motion that we amend the agenda to remove number three off the new business. May I ask for a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, so that brings us to our unfinished business, number two. And this is to approve the minutes of the July the 11th, 2023 regular schedule board meeting. Commissioner Patterson, any areas of omission?
No, I have none, Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Sursing?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, nor do I. I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes and ask for a second.
I say.
All in favor? Okay, number four, under new business, we have board discussion action on the reappointment of Brian Burgess to the Fannin County Board of Assessors. Before we do that, I'll sign this and get ahead of that. Getting a little freaky with what was coming. So, as we stated, is the reappointment of Brian Burgess to the Fannin County Board of Assessors. I'm assuming Mr. Burgess would be willing to do that, okay? And Commissioner Sursing, any discussion on this?
No, sir. Fine fellow, doing a good job. So, I'm all for it.
Commissioner Patterson?
I concur with that, Chairman. I think he would do a great job the second time as well.
Like being said, I'll make a motion to reappoint Brian Burgess to the Fannin County Board of Assessors and ask for a second.
I'll say that motion.
All in favor?
Aha.
Aha. Welcome back. Thank you for the job you did, Brian. We do appreciate you, God. Thank you. I'll get that signed.
Yeah.
I'm over. Believe that is.
He's got the original lines.
Thanks, sir. Number five is board discussion action on the appointment of Amber Twigs to the Fannin County Economic Development Authority Board. Gentlemen, I believe she was, she would be taking the seat as Mr. York, Richard York, was on that board and she had decided not to seek reelection, so to speak, so that was gonna be a vacated seat in that sense. I know the, after talking with Mrs. Self, she's the chairperson of that board. I think they done some interviews, I think there was five or six interviews that they held, and their recommendation was Amber Twigs. Ms. Twigs brings quite a bit of knowledge to this seat. I think she sat on our, on another committee that we had prior, so Commissioner Sursing, any discussion on that? Commissioner Patterson?
I know Amber and I think she'll do a fine job for us, but like you say, she's got a lot of extensive knowledge in various areas, so I think, I think it's a good hire.
Alright, well, that being said, I will make a motion to point Amber Twigs to the Fannin County Economic Development Authority Board and ask for a second.
I say.
All in favor?
Aha.
Oh, my, fuck. Alright, so number six, board discussion action, we have Director of Record Action, Eddie O'Neil, and we're gonna be opening up bids for the city vote.
Alright, this is from Georgia Mountain Pool Company out of Blue Ridge, Georgia. And the bid is, okay, the base bid is three million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then the alternative bid one, that's the way the bid sheet is, is three million eight hundred and two thousand. Alternative bid two is three million seven hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Alright, could you, I'm sorry, could you go back to the table one more time?
Sure, okay, the way the bid form is written, is presented, there is a base bid, and the base bid says the undersigned bidder agrees to perform all work as specified or indicated in the bidding documents for the following price. Base bid is three million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Bid alternate number one, and this was our form, delete the life floor surfacing material from the splash pad and provide a medium broom finished concrete surface as the finished material. And that bid was three million eight hundred and two thousand. Bid alternative number two, delete the slide and its associated pump from the scope of work. Piping from the pool mechanical building to the pool deck will be installed but with a flush cap at the pool deck and extended six inches above the floor in the building. And that alternative bid was three million seven hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Alright, so I'm assuming the next ones should be lined up the same ways?
Yes.
Should be the same, yes. And the second bid too, you can just throw that out, but I, I think I've got some stuff from GRPA in email. There's about to be a state law passed that you have to use the fluorine in the splash pads, so it's not to be a moot point anyway.
Alright, so our second bid is from Integrated Properties LLC out of Chattanooga, Tennessee. And its base bid is three million six hundred and ninety-seven thousand. For the sake of uniformity, I'm gonna go ahead and read off in a bid one. And it says deduct one hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. You'll hand me my phone, Mr. Patterson, I'll give you what, maybe, I'll let Miss Walker do the math.
So we're deducting what your decision?
Three million six ninety-seven.
But actually, Eddie said probably.
Less one twenty-one seven twelve.
It's gonna be three million five seventy-five two million.
And I'm not gonna write them. Okay, so then their next alternative bid, bid number two, alternative bid two.
Two three.
There was the main bid and an alternative bid one and alternative bid two.
Okay, okay.
And so you're gonna have to go back in and put three million six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, Sharon.
Okay.
Less one hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
So that's gonna be three million five seventy-seven one six.
That last was three million five hundred and seventy-seven thousand one sixty.
And our third bid is from Copper and Company, I'm sorry, Cooper, Cooper and Company General Contractors out of Cumming, Georgia. And the first, and the base bid is three million nine hundred and ninety thousand. Alternative bid, it says sixty thousand, so if you subtract sixty thousand from the main bid, you would have three million nine hundred and thirty thousand. And alternative bid two, it says deduct seventy thousand, so that comes to three million nine hundred and twenty thousand.
And then you just, like you said, you thought alternative bid one would come out?
Yes, I, I think alternative bid one is a moot point. Will be.
Yeah, okay. And that way we'd be looking basically the, the base bid and then alternative two.
Yeah.
And Cooper and Company General Contractors out of Cumming?
Yes.
Of course, yeah.
Can we ask questions here? Good, 'cause I got a ton of them, I think. Eddie, so this includes pool, splash pad, and all?
If you'll let me do the slides, I'll show you everything included right here.
Okay. Hit the lights.
The meeting, we wanna table this.
Yeah, what I would like to do is request we table it to get some background info. We know Integrated, they are the GC that done the renovations on the field, so they've already done work for us, the other two guys. Georgia Mountain was local, I know here, and Cooper and company. They did come to the pre-bid meeting and the site visit. We done a pre-bid meeting and a site visit, which Integrated and Cooper and Company attended, so they went to the site and done their preview of that whole area there.
Okay, make a motion now before we go into the site. Alright, so Jim and I will make a motion that we table this for our next regular meeting at proper times.
Right, and make sure.
For the scope of work.
Yeah, just ask the questions.
Make that motion, ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
So I don't have a 3D rendering of everything. There are some of the spray pad later on. So what you can see is obviously that this is the pool layout. It's a little over three thousand six hundred square feet. It's a zero entry pool to help with ADA issues, so basically it goes from zero out to, I can't see that exactly, but it gives zero out to about three feet in here. And then it has little water geysers here for kids to play in that zero entry area. There's ADA steps going down into the pool, and then this little offset is a bench area where you can pull up and sit at the poolside. Out on this end, it goes from eight feet up to four feet. It goes eight to six and up to, up to four. The reason we done that, these are 25 yard swim lanes, so if Parks and Rec or whatever ever wanted to add swim things, you do have a deep end where you can actually, these are starting blocks for that. And you could actually, it does have the 25 yard required length, you could actually dive in the pool and, and at least, you could host a swim event, but you could actually prep for swim events. Does that make sense?
You say you couldn't host it, you couldn't host it.
You couldn't host it because you don't have the depth all the way across.
Right.
Yeah, to make that big turn. This is obviously the slide that was mentioned in there. This is just a real cool slide. You'll see a better picture of it in a minute. This would be the mechanical room with all the filtration system. The spray pad area with benches and umbrellas for parents and all that stuff is here. Spray pad has about seventeen hundred square feet. If you've been to Beach Park at Blairsville, this is almost identical, identical in size to what they have there. If you remember being at the city, there used to be just a straight concrete ramp going up to that. We tore that out, obviously, and, and we would build a set of legal steps going up to that with the platforms into an entry plaza into this pool house. The pool house would have an open brisway where you would check in, go through, and enter the pool area with fencing all the way around, so we could control the crowd from the pool into the spray pad area. This is just, this is what the swim lanes would look like. You can see the tiles, and it would have tiles on the floor with removable ropes, and here is the ramp up and the water slide for the kids. That you can see that. And you can see the depth, eight foot up to six foot out to four. This is just a 3D dimensional drive, it's a top view of what the spray pad would look like with amenities. Go ahead. This gives you all the views of, of what you would have. Okay, and you can, that's kind of a better view if you can see the run-through things, the spray toys and all the stuff and the water play for, for the kids.
And do they come intermittently or?
It would run continuously.
Okay, so it's not like?
Yeah, spray pads are recycled water, so the water just goes back in and it's just, it's just chlorinated and pumped back in.
It'll be running like that all day long?
When you turn it on, that's correct.
Recycle?
Yeah, it just recycle, reuses that water.
Okay.
And another view, you kinda see all the little toys and side stuff there.
How many kids could get in there? You gotta want the limit, the splash pad.
The splash pad?
Yeah.
Uh, as many as you can fit. There's no limit on that. The baiter loads for pools are like ridiculous, like you could put almost 300 people in that pool. It's a thirty-six hundred square feet, it's a ninety-five thousand gallon pool. Obviously, you wouldn't want that many people in there. I think it's like one swimmer per every ten square feet or something crazy. I mean, the baiting loads are ridiculous, yeah. But as far as what state requirements are, splash pad, there's no requirements to it.
Do you don't think we'll have any problem with the pool being over, overfull at times?
I mean, I think you would crowded at times, you would probably have, I've, I've visited Pickens and Union County, they have times where you would have up to a hundred fifty people in the pool. But, you know, it's not like everybody goes in a pool. It's mostly the younger people and moms and dads are hanging out on the pool deck, you know. They never really see 300 people trying to get into the pool.
You gonna have one or two lifeguards?
You would have probably three lifeguards.
Three.
You gotta have one for twenty, one for the first twenty-five, one, so you would have one deep end, one shell, and one splash pad, yeah. And then you have to do it on a rotation, the way lifeguards work. They keep them out so many minutes and then they rotate. You would have to have concession stand workers. The lifeguards rotate in the sun for so long and then through to work, collecting money coming in, concessions, and then rotate back out onto the deck, yeah.
Okay.
Is there gonna be fencing in between the pool and the splash pad?
Yes, that's correct, there are. Uh, this is the pool house. It's kind of the, I call it cut block, architectural block. It'll be blocked. We're looking for something cheap and easy to clean. We did add some exposed timbers to kind of, you know, the metal roofing to give it kind of the Blue Ridge cabin look, a little bit of that as best we could. You can see the concessions area here. This door would be a brisway through the metal, and then you would have bathrooms, men's and women's separated, and you'll see that in a minute.
And showers?
There's showers. You have to have X amount of showers for, for that, yeah. And you can see men's, women's, you can see a backside view and a back view. There's the lobby. And you can see bathrooms on this side, bathrooms on that side with showers, and the concessions area on the end. Any questions there?
When you take up the money as you come through the.
As you would come through the breezeway, yeah. As you come through the breezeway, there's two offices there. This is just the mechanical room. I think the pool house is twenty-nine and a half feet by sixty-nine feet, and this mechanical room is up twenty by thirty-four to, you know, all your pumps and all that filtration system will run through the mechanical portion. I think there's one more, Patrick, is that right?
No, that's it.
Is that it? So, any question, but the bathrooms, it has multiple bathrooms in one side, and then the backside of those bathrooms, like the men's, the backside of the wall would be showers on the backside. So you'd have to have two showers, two or three, in the men's and X amount in the men's, yeah. And that's state required for pool.
So a lot of family space out there, too?
A lot of, yeah, a lot of family space. There's room on the sides of the showers for actually some lockers and dressing rooms, you know, so you could shower and dress and roll and come out that way. So that kind of gives you a quick view of what those bids encompass, all of them. I think it encompasses everything, the, the foam relers are called, and all the stuff you would need for people to bench work and all that, so.
That was basically what I wanted to know, was these prices cover all of that?
The prices would cover all of everything but the safety equipment we would need to buy for the lawn covers, yeah.
And they'll be uniformed and all, you address them.
Correct.
Assessors.
Eddie, I think I've been somewhere, people have been asking about this, how we're gonna fund this. What's the cost? I mean, we don't know what the cost yet, besides that, but with the funding coming out of, make sure that we get that.
Well, a large portion of the funding will obviously take out of recs, floss, and, and of course, the chamber within, for his product development, we'll, we'll take it each time for that.
About eighty-nine percent?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I can't speak for the chamber.
Yeah.
But in, in recs, floss, you gotta think there's over four hundred thousand in there, correct, Sharon? And then you'll have eight more months of collections before the pool actually opens. So, I mean, I can't predict sploss collections, but we know that percentage increases, and it's, and it's averaged around forty thousand.
Where are we looking at as far as opening when you said that?
Well, we would, obviously, full season would be Labor Day, Memorial Day of 2014. It's, if, you know, if construction happens to be, and we're willing to fund it.
And does that still leave us room now to finish the project over with our track and?
Oh, yeah, yeah. There, there'll be a large area left for.
Playground.
The track in there, you know. Yeah, it's kind of designed so the track can come around by the mechanical room.
That'd be good.
Yeah, we laid it out.
Now, that splash pad there, the way it's set up, that's over in the area where the trailer was at, right?
No, the splash pad is, is over, you remember where the diving board was?
Yep.
Right, so in that big flat grassy area on that, on that, it's just personal area. There's not a lot of site work has to be done. Not a lot of earthwork much in the whole park. It's just buildings and drainage work.
Eddie, speak to the track again, Johnny mentioned that, that's a trail. Will that be finished before?
No, that, that would be another project, the TPD sploss, you know, obviously, it's gonna, the, the plan is to take all the TPD and all the recs we can, and it's dedicated strictly to get the, this pool and splash pad open.
Get that open first and then do the.
Yeah, then you can come back and do the nature trail around the whole park.
So basically, you got phases, like phase one obviously.
That's, that's correct, yeah. Yeah, obviously, there's, you know, we, we've left room to, we've created more parkings. I, and those guys cleared that up where the trailer was. We wanna build a track around that whole park, and it equals out to about a mile, almost exactly a mile. Yeah, it's like one point one miles, so it works out perfect to that. And, and there's room we've left in there for, you know, pickleball courts, and of course, there's a fight, pickleball tennis players, but, you know, I can't.
There is a fight between.
Yeah, everybody wants, you know, one of the other.
When I was playing, we agreed it wouldn't go into Elias.
We'll do the playground in Elias, and there's a large area of playground.
But you will leave that area for that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And doesn't affect anything with a, with a existing two tennis courts there.
Eddie, I, I just got, I ended up the other day about the pickleball tennis, what's the deal there? I mean, they're talking about, I wish you'd been, okay, is it, and they, this one, we talked to him, he said, I, I really need more pickleball. They said, but now can they use the tennis courts for pickleball?
You can.
I thought so.
They can be striped, and, and, and one of the courts at the city park is, the only difference is that, is the tennis court net is fixed, and it's a little higher.
Oh, a little higher.
Than a pickleball net, so.
As long as they agree.
The pure picklers want it to be exact, you know, some folks don't care. I mean, you gotta remember, there's six, there's ten pickleball courts at Fannin County Parks and Rec.
At where she been?
There's, no, at, at the rec center. There's core outdoor courts and six indoor courts.
That's awesome.
So you can get three on the basketball court, so I give them three courts, six courts every day.
Pickleball.
Of pickleball, so there's ten courts, absolutely full, no doubt. I mean.
Every day?
It's, it's, yeah.
They're full?
Yeah, it's, yeah, they are.
So how do you, how do you get those things? I mean, did you call, get a reservation or?
We do open play, we do open play up to one o'clock, and then from one to three, it's reservations. Open play is they've got a paddle stacking system they use to take turns, have to play nice. From one to three, we let them reserve courts. we let them, uh, res- reserve courts, so you can play with who you wanna play with. And then we open the gym up totally to the public after three. So the kids can all come.
And they can play pickleball in there as well?
They got pickleball every day from, uh, nine AM or eight AM till three o'clock.
I had.
And outdoor courts.
I had no idea that, uh, there's that many pickleball people, but they, they're pretty, they're pretty pushy. Or whatever, I mean, they're really wanting that.
Their passion.
Passion, passion.
They're passionate, I give you a passion.
Well, it's the fastest growing, but the thing about it is, is that he's providing ten courts.
Yeah.
I don't think Union County does that.
He's providing about our.
So we've got ten right there. That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, we do. And could you fill up more?
Probably not.
Obviously could, you know, it just depends on.
Would it really help once we get that, get that city pool?
Well, I think with horseshoe bean, you got the walking path in.
Got the walking path in the dog park.
Yeah, playground equipment.
Yeah. So it's really nice that they're, they're talking that way, yeah.
I can tell you this, you, you've done a fantastic job, Chris, and, uh.
Big job.
I know you don't get, uh, recognized and love, but you, you've done a good job and, and we're thankful as, as the board and, and, uh, just excited to see this pool coming for these kids here in Fannie County.
That's right, that whole area.
You know, we, we drive back and forth, you know, carry gear, you get in and, and to keep them here and even some of the kids walking, you know, in the city, they can walk to the pool and ride the bike to the pool.
We all do it on the left.
All of our kids, lifeguard and.
Yeah.
We, we are thankful for that, but.
That's good and, I'm just glad that we're bringing it back for them.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie.
I'm sorry.
So we tackled that, okay. Eddie, let me ask you something. One other thing before you go. You've said that Enterprises or is that right?
Integrated is, is the GC that done all the renovation at Tom Wood Park. Yeah, so we've seen it work.
You have, uh, okay.
Yeah, the other two, you know, Cooper Company, I'm happy with those guys, I, which, you know, I don't know.
Well, it's easier sometime to deal with people you've.
Oh, yeah, it's much easier, that, that's for sure.
All right.
And the good thing with it, you know, if you guys choose integrated, their forte is concrete. That's what they are, is concrete. This project is concrete, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, they're not cool and all the daisies and splash spray pads and, you know, uh, Cooper Company, I.
And so they know also that we're on the timeline there?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right.
I get it. Mr. Chairman, I got one question for Patrick. Uh, Patrick, I've had several people wanna know more about this. Can we get a link, uh, or can I give them a link to this video or is that just for us? Or we get, get one?
What, what I would, what I would like to do is the, uh, the architects are working on a three D rendering, like where I showed you the first layout of just everything, they're, they're doing a rendering for the pool area like you saw the spray pad. So my recommendation was let those guys finish that three dimensional drawing so you, people could actually see it and then we can host it on the website.
On the website?
Thanks, yeah.
Yeah, we can put it everywhere.
Glenn could probably do something in the paper also with.
Yeah, yeah.
Glenn Horst.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, number seven, we have board discussion action. We have our building inspector, Keith Neighbors, regarding new permitting and inspection program proposal.
I gave y'all the information on this last, for the last commissioner's meeting. Uh, just so you know roughly what we're talking about, what we're doing. When we go out to do inspections on some houses, especially some of your bigger ones, we may go out there and do like nine, twelve inspections. Uh, which means you've got a bunch of paperwork. And what we're talking about doing is cutting it down to two sheets of papers I would have to print out. Uh, this system, and it would be, we are currently using File Vision is the system we use now. We're staying with File Vision, so they already know what we want, what we're doing, but they're going to develop a whole new program for us. And it will be on an iPad. All of these different inspections from tent poles to footers, slabs, rough framing, rough electrical, file bills, final electric, power only, mobile home stuff, the permit and the CO. All this stuff will be on that iPad. And like when we go out there, we'll pull it up and we punch a few buttons and it's already logged in. Now we have to go back to the office, fill out this stuff, give it to our secretary and she logs it all in, scans it into the computer system, does data entry. This will have it all done at one time. If somebody needing power on their house, we go out there, we inspect it. The next day, we send a notice to the power company saying that it is good to hook up. It's been inspected, it's approved. Typically, you're looking at twenty-four hours. We could do it right then before we leave the job. Email it straight to the power company. Especially up at times when you're dealing with some of these storms we've had. And get the power company out there, get everybody connected back up as quickly as possible. What we're looking at, and I have talked with them, uh, I know Johnny, he asked me, kept asking me about this before, is it necessary? We can keep doing our job out like we are. If we wanna come back into the next century though, yes, it's necessary. It's the way I'm looking at this. Gets into the future here. Uh, the company I have talked with them, they're talking about eighteen thousand dollars to do the software programming, training, installation. They're willing to, if we write them a check for nine thousand, they'll start on it tomorrow. We'll go through with this. They'll get it set up. We'll get the couple of months of testing out of this. And then they won't bill us for the other nine thousand until the first of the year, which we could put on next year's budget.
What about the iPads?
The iPads and stuff, we're looking at roughly four thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay, so you're gonna need nine thousand plus the four to get the iPads?
Yeah, we're looking at about thirteen hundred eight, thirteen thousand eight hundred. Asking for an increase in my budget. Uh, the cost on this program here, uh, it's a yearly maintenance fee that they tack on. And they have guaranteed us five thousand dollars for the next two years.
What's it go to after two year?
They said typically it would go up about five percent. And that's typically right now, this same program, we're paying, right now, I think the last time we paid was about thirty-eight hundred. And that's what it's been doing, is going up about five percent every year.
We're already doing that now.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and as far as bringing in like that, I know what that's like, cause that's how we do with the police and we try to do the same with the sheriff's office and so, and fire department and even ZIAs, you know, so.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with, uh, it'll make your jobs easier and it'll help the people out there. It's basically like you said, storms.
Right.
Getting those, getting their power back on.
So basically, we've been looking at an additional twelve hundred dollars annually for that. So you, we said we're paying thirty-eight hundred now, this will go up to around five, uh?
Correct.
Okay. Um, couple, just a couple of questions I have, so, um, do, do you have to have internet service or does that come into, does it make it online hotspot or something like that?
Yeah, hotspot, these, uh, iPads we're getting will be Wi-Fi, so you're capable.
Okay. Um, File Vision, that also, tax assessors use File Vision as well, right?
They have access to our File Vision, yes.
Would this, would this help that stream as well or is that?
It should, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's several people that use File Vision here in the county. Uh, tax assessors are on it. I think the road department spotted some of their right away. Uh, John over at the nine-one-one office has gone. He'll log in some addresses for us, so.
So this could be like, not just you per se, but it could actually flow into
Yes.
the other departments as well and make it, make it more efficient for everybody.
Uh-huh.
Okay, all right.
Save on paper costs?
Well, I'd say it would be huge. I mean, you're talking about twelve sheets of paper down to two. Uh, don't, typically, the only thing we'd be printing out is at the end of the job, when everything's complete, we'd print them out a certificate of occupancy. At the beginning of the job, we'd print out the building permit, which they have to have posted.
So you gonna have printers saving the truck?
Union County has printers and I just don't spend so. I pray they just be more trouble than they're worth, the printers in the truck. Those trucks get too dirty and nasty and I, I know printers, copiers are particular. Uh, but now these, as I said, now we, these, we print these up just so we can keep them in our own file of the book we have. But as far as that goes, the COs, we can do them right there on site emailing to the customers. We're typically emailing them anyway in our office, so.
It'll help us provide better service and help our employees.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I, I support you.
All right, email discussion.
You gonna write them a check later? Got the money.
And this will be coming out of your budget actually. Uh, and you would ask for an increase in your.
Correct, that's what we're doing, asking for an increase in the budget. Uh, next year, the nine thousand dollars that we pay will be in our budget, so.
Okay, all right. We take care of that. If everybody's in favor, what we'll do, we'll go ahead and, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the upgrade of the, of the current File Vision system that you have. Can I ask for a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh-huh. And we'll, I'll also make a motion to increase, um, his budget to, uh, reflect the thirteen eight to get started and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Uh.
That sound that way, right?
And you'll get it started on it?
I'll give them a call tomorrow, let them know that it's been approved.
All right.
Gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can tie that in with all the mother department, what that would be.
That would be great.
That would be huge. We thank everybody a lot for the leadership. Okay, so number eight, um, we have, uh, board discussion action, uh, for the additions or deletions of the Fannie County Road List. Just right click, we have any additions or deletions?
A second.
All right. Any discussion on that, you all for the report?
No, sir.
No, I'm okay with that.
All right. Number nine, we have our official year twenty twenty-three financial report for the second quarter. And that would be our financial director, Sherry Walker, to let us know that.
Everyone should have a copy attached to the agenda on the backside of it if you want to look at the numbers along with me there. I'm fine. I don't wanna turn my ears, so. Okay, if you see for the second quarter, um, to date, for our total fund revenues received, we have eleven million five hundred and sixty-one thousand and sixty-four dollars. Our total fund expenditures to date is ten million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Our net revenue over expenditures is one point two. Overall percentage into the budget is forty point nine percent. With no departments being over budget at the present time.
It's all for the motion.
Yes. Uh, we do have, uh, there was a few, um, more expenditures this period than there were last period due to some of the general fund expenditures. Uh, you can see that on page twenty there under the portion enough tag over expenditures. Uh, as you see, our local option sales tax that we've received to date and then our spots that we've received today.
All, all by your numbers, it, it seemed to be doing pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
With your numbers here.
And we'll be, uh, finishing up our last, uh, payment with the old spots. And, uh, we get our last payment in October and our new twenty twenty-three spots that just passed in March will begin in November of twenty twenty-three, so.
We can keep the last.
Project to be keep, yeah, to have a lot more coming in.
That's awesome.
Any concerns, Ms. Walker?
I don't have any at the present time.
Okay.
Chairman's doing good.
We're blessed.
We, we've cashed in a lot of aluminum cans, like you said, so we're thankful for that.
Yeah.
We haven't hit that. As you know, at the end of the year, we get a lot of revenue in off the property taxes that, that's part of it that comes in. So our revenues really jump up toward the end of the year.
All right. You have any, uh, discussion on this?
I have none, Chairman.
No, sir.
All right, good job, thank you. So number ten, uh, we have board discussion action on the resolution for opening new bank accounts for that new spots coming in. So Ms. Walker, you wanna elaborate on that a little?
Yeah, uh, these are restricted funds, uh, based on referendum and, uh, for our capital projects that we have. So we're required by law to keep those separate. So we have to open new bank accounts for every, uh, new spots referendum that's passed for the funds to go into. Of course, we have to use the old funds first, uh, the ones that we've got outstanding in the two thousand seventeen, uh, spots accounts. We have to use those first, exhaust those, and then once those funds are exhausted, that carries over into the new revenue of the twenty twenty-three, uh, spots revenue that we'll get for the next, uh, six years. Projections on that were fifty-six million, I believe.
Oh, yes, that's good.
And that should be, if we keep getting what we're getting, we average anywhere from seven hundred to over eight hundred thousand a month. So those come in toward the end of the month.
Thank you.
Any discussion following? Bring this to a mode about establishing new bank accounts?
No, sir.
I have none.
Okay. Um, that being said, I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, to accept the resolution to establish, um, new bank accounts for the, the new spots coming in. I'll make that motion. Ask for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh-huh. I'm getting that for, uh, Keith, that saves some paper now. I'm getting that for, uh, Keith, that saves some paper now. Seven, thank you. Alright, that brings us down to, uh, public commentary, anybody else, uh, come and speak, let us know your name and where you live and. Tell us what's on your mind. Keith? Alright, I'll, uh, close the public commentary, ladies and, let's take a call. Alright, we'll close the public commentary. Um, gentlemen, that brings us to executive session. Um, Mr. Church, do you have a need for executive session this evening?
I, I kinda feel like I do, I mean, it won't be long.
Mr. Brad, do you need it?
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna.
Alright, guys.
Oh, you school, you guys gonna vote against me?
So I'll, I'll make a motion, we go into executive session. Ask for a second.
Uh.
All in favor?
Uh.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session, ask for a moment of paper.
Uh-huh.
Alright, while in the executive session, we discuss personnel and, uh, real estate, no action taken. Um, Dan Sale, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Johnny made a motion, Dan Sale, we all agree. Alright, thank y'all.